I'd like to call the February 11, 2016, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Here.
Mayor Holman?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
First order of business today are council minutes of the meeting of January 11, January 14, and the January 23, 2016, city council retreat. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council approve the meeting minutes from January 11 and January 14, 2016, and the retreat minutes from January 23, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion of second. If you call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Next order of business is matters of special privilege, and today we have, I'd like to ask Robbie Hutton if she would be, come up and introduce her new deputy director of Parks and Recreation, Jared Hurd. Robbie, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Holman, members of city council. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come before you to introduce the newest member of our Parks and Recreation team, Deputy Director Jared Hurd. Jared joins us from James C. County Parks and Recreation, where he served as a recreation program coordinator and a park operations manager, and we are truly excited to have him not only join the Parks and Recreation team, but the city family.
Terrific. Jared, welcome, and thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. And thank you, Robbie. Next order of business is a public hearing. This is PCR 16-001, amendments to zoning ordinance, signed regulations, Article 6, and this is proposed ordinance 16-04. Mr. Nestor.
Well, I'm actually going to start.
Okay.
Back in June, the US Supreme Court decided the case of Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, and as a result of that case, we need to make some amendments to our sign ordinance. The holding in the case reiterated the proposition that sign regulations need to be content neutral, but the court more fully defined what it meant by that, and so the rule of thumb that the court gave us is that if you have to read the sign in order to be able to determine how to regulate the sign, it is not a content neutral regulation. So let me give you an example from our zoning ordinance. We regulate real estate signs. There's no way that you know that that's a real estate sign unless you read the sign. And so our zoning ordinance has quite a few instances where we have situations like that, and so we need to amend the sign ordinance to remove those. And so Reed's going to talk to you about what specifically we've done to make sure that our ordinance is in compliance with the case.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to go over a few examples as a list of 20 different things that I spelled out in the memo. I'm not going to give you PowerPoint slides for each of those 20 examples, but I picked out some typical one. For example, in our ordinance now, if you have a gas station, you're allowed on your 32-square-foot sign to devote 75% of that sign to advertising gas prices. Normally, you can only have 25% changeable message. We can't say you can use 75% of the sign to advertise gas prices, so we've changed the ordinance to say, if you're a gas station, you can have 75% of your sign as a changeable message. You could put the gas prices on there, or you could put your sale price for six packs of Coca-Cola, whatever you would choose, but we can't specify what content is on that changeable message. And this goes throughout the ordinance. The real estate sign, now we say you can have certain size real estate signs in residential and non-residential districts as well. Real estate sign, that's content-based. If you look at what the sign is, it's advertising real estate for sale. So now we have changed that to say you can have signs identifying property offered for lease or sale, provided they're removed within five days of the date of closing or the beginning of the lease, and we have sign areas. But you could put whatever you want to put on the sign. If the property is for lease or sale, you have the ability to put up a temporary sign of a certain size. I mean, for the most part, it's going to work the same as it does now. We're just tweaking our language so it meets the criteria set for the Supreme Court. So those are just two out of the 20 examples that sort of, we're doing that all through the ordinance. Another example is for political signs, we now regulate political signs specifically. There's no mention of political signs in the new ordinance. It's signs displaying non-commercial messages are allowed, provided that the signs are removed within 24 hours of the last day of the event to which they're detained. The aggregate size allowed is 32 square feet for each street frontage, so you could have a multitude of small political signs on your property, for example, so long as the total didn't exceed 32 square feet per street frontage, or you could have one 32-square-foot sign, whatever you would have. But this isn't just political signs. This could be the Greek festival, it could be whatever you would want to advertise on your property. So that's sort of the, we don't have a choice but to do this, part of the changes we're making to the sign regulations. Since we were making these, we went ahead and added a number of other changes that are optional but should be looked at. One adds provisions to the downtown and midtown sign districts to allow the city to erect signs of private property or public right-of-way for directories, and this is in accordance with some of the GIO initiatives that the city manager will be talking about in a little bit. This just gets a framework for allowing those in the sign ordinance. For shopping centers, we allow alternatives to the standard 32-square-foot sign. If you have, you need, if at 250 feet of frontage per sign, if you have 750 feet or more, like High Street does, like the Williamsburg Shopping Center does, you can, instead of having three 32-square-foot signs, you can have a 64-square-foot sign and a 32-square-foot sign, or two 48-square-foot signs. But the ordinance says now you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for special exception. Well, the criteria in the sign ordinance is so explicitly spelled out, there's really not a need to go to the time and trouble of applying to the Board of Zoning Appeals, as long as you follow the guidelines in the ordinance, and you're still required to have approval of those signs by the Architecture Review Board. Now, the biggest non-mandatory section of the sign changes that we're looking at is an alternative to allow neon signage in windows in the B3 district portion of the midtown planning area. Now, the B3 portion, that starts at the Williamsburg Shopping Center and Peter Chang's. It goes up to Whitley's Peanuts and the old Princess Anne Hotel at New Hope Road, and it goes out Monticello Avenue down to Traver Drive, includes Garrison. So that's the area we're talking about. The city's economic development directors receive inquiries from businesses asking for flexibility to allow neon signage in windows as on monument signs. We discussed this in general with Smalley Signs back in Planning Commission in 2014. The commission decided not to go any further with consideration of neon signs. So based on the request that Michelle has heard, I've added provisions to allow neon signage in the B3 district only. The initial provision was up to 24 square feet of illuminated signage, including neon in windows in the B3 district. It would have to be deducted to, from your permitted building-mounted sign area, and that ranges from 40 to 100 square feet, depending on the size of your building and your building footback, setback. So if you were closer to the street, like a lot of the smaller buildings are, you would most likely have 40 square feet of building-mounted sign area. If you put the 24 square feet of illuminated signs, which could include neon, that would give you 16 square feet of sign area left to put on your building. So you may or may not choose to have that maximum of 24 square feet. You may want more sign on the building. Neon signage is not proposed for any monument signs in front of the building. It was just written up to be signs behind a window, and Planning Commission looked at this, and they felt it was okay, but they wanted some additional restrictions, that the maximum size sign be 12 square feet, and there be no more than one sign on any one side of the building. So if you had a building with, you could have a 12-square-foot illuminated sign on the front and a 12-square-foot illuminated sign on one of the sides, but you couldn't put both in the front window, or have a 24-square-foot sign on the front window. So the commission recommended that this alternate one that you have written in your ordinance be adopted as part of the changes with the additional language that they added, which is shown in blue on your ordinance. Now, this was discussed at the EDA meeting prior to Planning Commission meeting. EDA was in favor of the proposal. They also wanted to allow LED signs, like you see here. They have a much different character, at least present day, than neon signs. The commission looked at this, and looked at this, and said neon signs only, that LED signs don't fall under this. And finally, we are proposing directional signs in public rights-of-way. This would be under the permanent signs in all districts category. It would allow signs on public rights-of-way that are erected and maintained by a governmental entity authorized by city council, for example, the EDA, for the purpose of identifying and providing directions to residential, institutional, and/or commercial uses that do not have adequate visibility from major streets, such as the Porter Path at Williamsburg Development. Such signs, including their size and location, would need specific approval from city council. So this provides a mechanism to add additional directional signage where that is needed on a case-by-case basis, but subject to specific approval by city council. Planning Commission held their public hearing last month, and they recommended adoption of this package of changes, as well as the alternate one for neon signage with the additional restrictions that I went over. So that's a quick explanation of what we're proposing, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Reed. Let me come back to council for any questions, comments.
I have a few questions, if I may. Mr. Nestor, in, there's a lot of bullets here. In item three, ARB cannot require changes to signage design that uses registered trademarks. Has, so a trademark is not only the content of the design, but it's also the color. So how does that impact the ARB's regulation of color?
They would have to allow the trademark. A trademark communicates an idea. It's not simply the words on the sign, but the trademark itself, in many cases, communicated, communicates an idea. So Reed and Carolyn and Joe and I spent a lot of time looking at ordinances, attending discussions about this, and the best guidance that we're getting is that because of this case, trademarks need to be an exception to the restrictions with the ARB. So that's what, that's what we did.
And an example of this is the McDonald's sign on Richmond Road. That's a monument sign, has the golden arches on it. Planning, this is ARB approved that, but they require that it be externally illuminated rather than internally illuminated. So it has the trademark, the trademark colors, but the illumination was as specified by the ARB.
And this is to both of you, or I think all of these are to both of you. On item seven, menu boards cannot be specifically regulated. So the decision that's guiding this is a US Supreme Court decision?
Uh huh, yes.
So to whom does that apply?
Everyone.
So what does that mean for the Alcohol Beverage Control Board's ability to regulate content related to happy hour, prices of beer, specials?
All right, well, everyone is too broad. It applies to local government regulation of signs within its jurisdiction. It was specifically involving the town of Gilbert, Arizona. So this particular case involves our zoning regulations specifically.
So ABC Board still has that capacity until somebody's?
Sure. I think there is some argument to be made that those are police powers that are not zoning-related. Those are related to health and safety issues. In the case of local government regulation of signs, we do that for a lot of reasons. We do that for aesthetic reasons, we do that for some safety reasons, we do that for cohesion in the community and beautification of the community, none of which rise to the level that would survive a strict scrutiny inquiry into our ordinance. And so that's what we would have to do if we wanted to regulate the contents of signs. We would have to be able to survive that, and it's very difficult to win those cases.
I just want to clarify, 18D, temporary banners, hoods, covers over existing building-mounted and freestanding signs are allowed when a business changes its name, but the limitation to change a business name is the only message permitted has been removed. Can you just talk about that a little more? So this is somebody, they have a sign for a prior tenant, or maybe the actual tenant's name has been removed, there's a sign structure, and they're taking some material canvas or something else, and maybe it's plastic, and putting a hood over the sign.
Until they can have a new sign made.
But there's no time limit listed here, or is that just because you haven't?
This is, this is under the temporary signage section of the ordinance. I believe that when we go...
And the only reason I ask is many of these other examples list where there's a time constraint, what the time constraint is in the bullet, and I just didn't see one.
There is an eight-week limitation.
And so the change here is they can, the business owner can put any messaging they want on that sign cover?
Correct.
And in most of these examples, what we've done is leave the substance of the regulation there, but we've had to figure out a way of describing the sign with a content-neutral description.
And the last question for right now is 20C. The prohibition of permanent or temporary signs displayed on vehicles conspicuously parked so as to advertise the business has been revised, so that they just have to be in a designated legal space and in operating condition and properly licensed. Was there any discussion about a designated legal space that is a particular distance away or a location within the lot? Was that, did that just get too complicated?
It got complicated. It's not currently what we have, so we didn't look at changing a lot of the practical provisions that we have. We know that there are a few of these out there, but it's hard to regulate a moving vehicle that just happens to be used as a sign. And so as long as, as it's moving and it's operable, where they park it, it gets a little tricky.
That's all. Scott?
This is just a practical question. You've used several examples of neon signs, one of which was a bistro sign. How do you go about measuring something like that bistro sign that's just script? You know, you were talking about?
Well, for, and this is signage, whether it be neon signage or other, when it would be a sign like this, you draw a box around the sign, you know, as if it was mounted on a sign board, and that is your dimension. If it's a circular sign, you calculate the area of a circle, and in some cases, you know, you might have a rectangular sign imposed upon a circular sign with a couple of things sticking out, and if it's geometrically possible to calculate those, we calculate around the edges, but, well, like the bicycle too, you would draw a box around that bicycle and measure it.
That's why they teach geometry.
That's right. That's why I don't have that job.
I'm the first calculus.
I have an old high school textbook I keep in my bookcase, so when I have to figure the area of geometric figures, I go to it.
Good.
I'm really not offended by any of these changes. You know, I think we've, we've kind of heard for years, you know, businesses often are, feel a little overly constrained, and so I think this is an opportunity for them to have their branded colors and those types of things on their signs, and so I think that's a good thing. I know that this issue doesn't address the sign program that's administered by Virginia Logo. Do we have an ordinance that doesn't allow them in the city, you know, the signs that says, you know, Sow's, one mile that way?
The city sign ordinance just addresses signs on private property. It does not address any signs within public rights.
Right, and so is that a city manager policy to allow those signs or not? Because we don't allow them in the city now, I don't think, or we don't have them in the city.
I have to look at, I haven't looked at that issue.
We had a discussion of this one, because those signs essentially are run through, on the interstate, through VDOT, and then when you get off of VDOT, it's...
Virginia Logo.
Yeah, but, well, they're the company that provides them, but they do it through, through VDOT, and then, or through, yeah, VDOT on the interstate, and then I think on secondary roads, and then when it comes to the city, it is, it is the city's decision. They're typically on public right-of-way, so it wouldn't come into this, and there are some in the city, I believe, on Bypass Road.
Okay, well, and so, and how do we administer that? Is that, when a business, because I know that there's some businesses that were interested in having them, and we ran into some roadblocks, so maybe that's a discussion. Do you want to look into that?
Let me look into that with the city attorney and give you a response on that. The city manager has some limited authority to place signs of a public or quasi-public nature within the city street right-of-way, and I may need some legal assistance on whether or not the Virginia sign program would be defined as quasi-public or just private commercial benefit.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate some follow-up on that. I don't have any questions, but I'm comfortable.
Jude?
Reed, you had the example of the amount of signage you can have in your yard, somebody's yard, the political signs or the Greek festival signs, and those all have an ending date. There's an election, there's the Greek festival. What about if somebody wants to put a sign that says piano lessons? There's no ending for the piano lessons.
It would fall under temporary signs. No. You can have a message of that nature in your yard for as long as you want.
Oh, you can. Okay, thank you. That's all for now. I'll keep thinking.
Several, several issues to be followed up on, thanks. Any other questions? Yeah, I think, one, some of this is, we have no choice about it. Other parts, I think, bring our ordinances in line with practicality and reality of today, so it seems to me that all of these changes make sense, and I personally, having just attended the opening of the new site for the Neon Museum in LA, I happen to really like neon signs and think that they add to an urban setting, so I personally like that, but we'll let council discuss that in more detail when we come back. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this item to please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
I'd just like to thank Chris and Reed for this, because I can't imagine how complicated it was to go through all of the sign regulations and determine where we were really regulating content, and then if we were, how to still get the desired effect for the community and remove the content reference.
And Carolyn and Rod.
Okay, I'm sure you all had a great time doing it, so thank you very much. I guess it's possible something else could come up down the road, but you think you've done a pretty good scouring.
It's consistent with VML's model ordinance, to the extent that we can be realizing that jurisdictions regulate signs in all sorts of ways with permits that we don't necessarily provide for, and so we're fairly comfortable for that, for the moment, we're all right.
And there's nothing in the change that particularly concerns me. I think the bigger issues with signs are overall size, elevation, interior versus exteriorly illuminated. So I think, and that's not affected here. The one thing I'm curious about, though, and this goes back to the conversation that was in the Economic Development Authority meeting about whether it should be LED and neon or just neon, and the sense of what I gathered from the EDA conversation was, there are other technologies besides neon now that weren't available 30 years ago. So why do we constrain ourselves to an older technology unless we can articulate something about the LED over the neon that's particularly unappealing, jarring, disruptive? And I can see there's a difference if you talk about moving versus static, but I don't even know if that's addressed in here. So on that front, I almost advocate a little more flexibility. We don't need to deal with that today. I think that's something we can talk about down the road. We'll have lots of time to come back to this, but, so for the purposes of what we're going to vote on today, I'm comfortable with all this.
Scott?
I, for the most part, agree with Paul. I think the neon signs, particularly when used correctly, can have a real warming effect from the street if you wanted to go in and want to go into a place of business. Think of the Fan in Richmond, a lot of neighborhood restaurants right next to homes that have tasteful neon signs that really add to that neighborhood vibe. I'm not a huge fan of the LED signs. I appreciate that that may be what's more readily available or more, makes more sense economically, but I do think that neon has a much more homey, traditional aesthetic to it. I associate the LED signs with convenience store, you know, more interstate corridor-type uses, so kind of particular to the neon.
No, I agree. I think, Todd, I understand the technology of LED a little bit more and what the extremes are. It would be better for me to understand that before I made a decision on that. But I would agree, I think the, as I said earlier, you know, allowing businesses, a little bit more flexibility, and particularly when it comes to brand and brand colors, it is a challenge. For example, I was with a, formerly with a franchise that required a certain purple, but that didn't fall into the guidelines, and so eventually ARB did approve it, but you know, it was a little tough. And so I think it takes kind of that, that... And so I think it takes kind of that, that, that rigor out of it, and I appreciate what this ordinance is doing. And it also does protect, you know, we went through great lengths deciding about the number of square footage on signage in the Prince George Street area, where the sidewalks are, you know, tight, and we want people to be able to sit out there, and we don't want signs to encumber the people's ability to get back and forth. And so, you know, those, those types of measures are still under the, under city ordinance, so we're not losing that important aspect of it, but I'm.
Judy?
I do appreciate all the work. I'm, I remember being on the BZA and talking about measuring signs and all that kind of stuff. It's not easy. I tend to be very conservative about signs. I keep remembering Hilton Head. You know, it, it just looks better not to have, and, and you go, I think you start on a slippery slope when you start talking about LED lights and flashing lights, and, and then you do begin to look like an interstate, a pull-off the interstate. So I, again, I would be willing to look at all these things, but I think we need to go as slowly as possible. And I know it's not part of the ordinance, but the trucks that are parked in front of stores to advertise the stores have driven me crazy for a long time. And I think it's, it's unfortunate that they do that. I feel the same way about using the American flag as a sign. I think you just, I just don't think that's right. But that's a whole discussion for a different day. I, I will support these changes because we clearly have to.
Thank you, and thanks. I think, I, you know, I like Scott's point. There, there is an aesthetic difference between sort of the traditional neon signs and LEDs that I think, I'm not quite there yet. I, I think that as time goes on and the technology changes and gets, gets improved, there may be ways to think about it, and I think that needs to be on, on our agenda for the future. But right now, I'm comfortable with this as well, so with that, I'll take a motion.
We've got a choice here.
Yeah, we, we have a choice. And, and the question is whether to follow the recommendation and add option one about neon signs or not. What I'm, what I heard in the discussion is some agreement about neon signs, but maybe we need to, so do we want that to be part of this motion? I'll say, I would like it to be part of this, this motion. I, I think it, I think it adds a vibrancy and, and just, just a feeling to, to areas where those signs, you know, they're, they're not going to be large, they're, they're going to be in windows on the sign buildings and all. I think they can be creative and innovative and, and also help, help businesses.
But just the fact that you went to a museum of a neon sign.
It's, it's, it's the museum of, of neon art.
But neon signs can be artwork in a way.
Oh, yeah, they are, they are beautiful. Wonderful.
And the Planning Commission recommended. The Planning Commission looked at it.
I'm perfectly comfortable with all three.
I was just to clarify with the Planning Commission's additional recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
This is as, as proposed by the, the Planning Commission, so does that need to be in, in the motion?
Well, it's the first sentence of the suggested action in the memo would be a motion.
So, are you ready?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve proposed ordinance 16-04, including alternate one, to allow neon window signs in the B3 portion of the Corridor Sign District with the additional changes recommended by Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and second, would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hyland?
Aye. Next order of businesses or reports, the first is monthly financial statement. Marvin, anything in particular to point out?
To be brief, the right things are going up and the, the expenses are staying flat or.
Any, any questions on particular items?
It's always good news.
Next is monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
I'd just like to, to point out one thing, under the fire department, with the average EMS response time and fire response time, you'll notice a, a slight tick up, less than, less than a minute. The, the fire chief reported that when you back out the snow event and, and the slight delay with, with working through snow-covered and ice-covered roads, it's back in the normal time with that one anomaly for January.
Thanks. Any, any questions?
I did have a question.
Yeah.
I have a question for Mr. Wallantish, Peter, about the, have we seen a big uptick of people coming to social services because of the closure of the Super 8?
We've had a manageable number from there. In fact, I think the latest figure I have is that we had six issues resolved and seven units still there that may or may not come for request. So remember, they were not at occupancy, so there was a lower number to begin with, and we've been able to handle all the requests through our outreach coordinator, Roy Girardi.
Have, have they all been handled in the city, or have some gone into either county to live?
That depends, on a case-by-case basis, because it depended on the individual need. In some cases, they were extended family. It really got down to the individual situation, but there was no, like, uniform process for any of them. It depended on what, what they had as resources and assets as far as family or friends, and then whatever relocation was needed. We worked with our partners as well to affect that. But so far, it's been very manageable.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any, any other questions on department operating reports? If not, we'll move to city manager reports, and we have three. The first is a budget amendment, reapportion, reappraisal of current year capital projects for BNIOR GIOs. Planning initiatives, this is proposed resolution 16-02.
Great, I'll handle that one. This is a reappraisal of three existingly, existing appropriated capital projects, the first being the Economic Development Contingency Fund, Quarter Path Park Improvements, and Quarter Path Park Design Funds for the former pool area. That, those three projects total $506,200. It's a total reappraisal of that to achieve funding in GIO projects identified by City Council as top and high priority that did not have funding in the current year. So it's, it's moving the, the council's priority projects up in, into a funding situation. So the, the projects that would be funded with that funding are the Northeast Triangle Redevelopment and Design Plan, the Downtown Vibrancy and Design Plan, Downtown and Arts District Wayfinding Signs. It, it provides a project for the Downtown Parking Study rather than contingency as previously reported. Bike, it's a program study for a bike share program, Public Art Consultant and Grant Writing, Midtown Legal and Consultant Costs Rather Than Contingency As Previously Reported, Parks Recreation and Cultural Master Plan. So it's, it's putting those projects in the current year's budget, and it will effectively zero out the Economic Development Contingency Fund. This has been presented to the Economic Development Authority with their recommendation of approval. They understand that the planning initiatives better prepare the city and encourage redevelopment, so they're more likely to get inquiries from businesses after, after we implement these plans and initiate these plans. For the park improvements, before we expend significant funds improving parks, it's better if we complete the master plans, and we talk with Parks and Recreation staff so that we're better able to prioritize capital funds going to our parks and make sure that we're spending it in the right places moving forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Phil Sarah's here as well, our finance director, if you have any questions from a financial standpoint.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Paul?
Yeah, if I may. Mr. Collins, Mr. Sarah, if, if we're taking money that's in the already-approved CIP budget, putting it into the operational budget so that it can be spent?
It's not the operational, it's still the capital.
Well, we're just allocating it to a specific thing, but what we lose here is the Quarter Path Park Improvements and the Quarter Path Park Design Funds for the pool area, which we will add back into the CIP in a later year. So is it our expectation, then, that each of these eight GIO planning initiatives that are addressed here are going to be accomplished in the current fiscal year?
No, that.
It seems very ambitious, that's why. It's not a long timeline.
No, we, we do not have the, the staff resources to, to accomplish all of these or, or obtain out time, be able to provide oversight of outside consultants within that time period. It, it does allow us to begin to prioritize these eight, to develop RFPs and RFQs, and the projects that we want to start earlier, that we have the staff resources in place, we'll, we'll go ahead and get those out in advance.
And it seems like number four is at the top of the list.
Four, four is already going. That one's assigned to planning with the parking, Downtown Parking Study. If you look at Parks Recreation and Cultural Master Plan, now that we have a, a deputy Parks and Recreation Director, that frees up our Parks and Recreation Director to work more closely on that project with management, so that one can, can begin moving most likely sooner. And then, then there's several there that are economic development related, and, and so that's working with economic development staff, prioritizing with the EDA, looking at the scope of services and deciding which, which ones in our best interest to move forward first. We, we can't likely do three things at one time with limited staff, but we'll bring back that priority. If, if, for instance, the Northeast Triangle Redevelopment Design Plan anticipates approximately $150,000, if we're anywhere over $100,000, we'd have to come back to council for approval. So, so that would be coming back to you, and we'll, we'll keep reporting back as we always do on your strategic.
So that leaves my last question, which was, is it possible to, it doesn't have to be complicated, but just a brief description of the timeline of how all these are planned for where we know what we're going to do and when we're going to do it, and then some explanation of the fluidity on the ones that are still to be determined? And then get that updated every quarter, what, what, as changes justify?
Yes, we'll, we'll update the action plan that, that I currently provided council to reflect this action, and we'll prioritize the time inappropriately.
One of the things I'd like to avoid is just an expectation that, oh, now they've done this, so we should have a Parks and Master Plan next month, or, you know, we should have a Northeast Triangle Redevelopment Design Plan by June, and that's just not realistic.
Our staff resources remain the same, and that's all, and a limitation of the city ourselves.
So just, just that setting proper expectation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Scott?
In spite of Paul's clear message that this is all not going to be done at once, I'm excited to see that this is on the slate, and, and we've got a clear outline of how to get it done, given, given our limited resources, so, positive.
Yeah, and, and I agree. I think, you know, when we, when we put the money in the Economic Development Contingency, we, we kind of had the aspiration that some of this stuff would, monies would go to help things in the future, but there wasn't a real plan, and so, thank you, Mr. Collins and staff for, you know, putting this, putting this before us in this way, because I think it, it gives us the ability to do the planning and the research so that we can make better decisions, and, and I think, not, not that we didn't have a course set up out for us in the past, but this, I think, gives us better talking points, it gives us more opportunity for citizens to participate, and so I think it's an all-around good thing for us.
I agree, I like the specificity of this.
Yeah, I, I'd have to compliment Mr. Collins on this. I think, you know, you've really taken, you've listened to city council, you've, you've sort of understood sort of our goals and initiatives and what we want to accomplish, and you've, you've created a framework for making that happen, and I think that's, that's both innovative and, and exactly what we need, so thank you very much for doing this. And I know you didn't do that alone, there are a lot of staff, staff work's part of that, and if I were a standperson looking at this, I'd say, oh my God, what, what are we, what are we getting into? But on the other hand, I think it, it really maps out for us and for the city over the next few years, some real, you know, concrete accomplishments that are going to take place and as, as we envision sort of what we want Williamsburg to be in the next 20 or 30 years. So I think this is a good, good start.
And I mean, Wednesday's EDA meeting, I think there was a lot of excitement and enthusiasm among the membership, and maybe a little bit of anxiety among the economic development staff about how to do all this, especially when the EDA was so excited about it all. But at that meeting, Ms. DeWitt also emphasized that just because the contingency fund is being zeroed out, doesn't mean that if the right circumstances come along, that we won't be able to find some resources to help incentivize a game-changing business to come into this community.
Correct. You want to have good problems. Having more businesses come to the community and having to identify ways to help them locate in the community, that's, those are good problems. We, we encourage those problems.
Again, I, I want to thank you and, and staff for all the work that went into this, and I think it's a, a good direction, and with that, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve proposed resolution 16-02, amending the sales tax fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and second, call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hyland?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Next city manager report is the Ironbound Road, Long Hill Road intersection, Kimley-Horn contract.
Aaron Small, our city engineer.
Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon to everybody. Before you today is the award of a professional engineering services contract for the Ironbound Road, Long Hill Road Intersection Improvement Project. The improvements to Ironbound Road were originally presented before council in February of 2008 in response to some anticipated traffic coming from the High Street development. And while development has slowed and the funding for transportation projects has been scarce in the intervening period, the anticipated changes at James Blair, coupled with the Aldi Grocery Store redevelopment at the Governor's Spotswood property, have increased the urgency of this project, and the city was fortunate to receive full funding for the first phase of improvements along the Ironbound Road Corridor. This first phase involves shifting of the intersection of Ironbound Road and Long Hill Road to the west, approximately 100 feet to provide better separation from Richmond Road. It's also anticipated that we will be signalizing the Ironbound, or the Long Hill Road intersection as part of the project and provide for turn lanes at the new Aldi entrance and coordinate with James Blair on their entrances off Long Hill Road. The project also includes underground wiring along Ironbound Road and improved pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Staff advertised the project in late October and received six proposals for the design of the project. After reviewing the six proposals, we whittled it down to three firms that were selected for face-to-face interviews, which were held in mid-December. We ranked each of the three firms based upon criteria accepted by VDOT and the FHWA, with the highest ranking firm being Kimley-Horn Associates. Staff then proceeded with negotiations with Kimley-Horn on the detailed scope of work and the fee, and have come to a mutually agreeable conclusion. Kimley-Horn's project team has provided similar services on various transportation projects, such as the preliminary studies on the Ironbound Road Corridor. They are also providing traffic engineering services for the school system on the James Blair replacement, and provided the site plan designs for the Aldi and the adjacent CBS properties. Because a portion of the project budget is federal funds and over $200,000, the VDOT Assurance and Compliance Office is performing a pre-award evaluation review of the contract and negotiated fee to assure it complies with all federal acquisition regulations. That process can take up to 20 business days, and so rather than delay the start of the project even further as we await that review, we have recommended award of the Ironbound Road, Long Hill Road Intersection Design Services Contract to Kimley-Horn in the amount of $435,237 contingent upon a successful pre-award evaluation by VDOT. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Questions?
Half question, half comment. Mr. Collins, this may be as much for you as for Mr. Small. We referenced the redevelopment of the James Blair property in here. We referenced the redevelopment of the James Blair property in here, but even without that redevelopment, with the eventual or soon opening of Aldi, other changing traffic patterns in the area, growth in feeder areas outside the city that's driving traffic in, this is something we would probably need to do regardless. And then when we factor in the potential in the longer term for the improvements of Long Hill Road and James City County, which have the capacity of significantly increasing traffic flow, that would put more pressure on this intersection, and it's much better to be ahead of the curve in that regard?
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Very fair.
Scott?
Thank you, Aaron. So if there are changes required by the VDOT review, how would that be handled? I mean, you've said it's.
Oh, we suspect most, their review is mainly focused on a lot of procedural, not necessarily the fees.
Okay.
So they're just making sure that the fees, it's within reasonable guidelines.
Okay.
It's within, and they've met all of the requirements of the other federal requirements, such as the EEOs and cost escalation.
Okay.
Under the acquisition regulations.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, thank you, Aaron. We appreciate that. With that, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I move that council authorize the city manager to execute the Kimley-Horn Associates Memorandum of Agreement for the Ironbound Road, Long Hill Road Intersection Improvements for $435,237 contingent upon a successful pre-award evaluation by VDOT's Assurance and Compliance Office.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Thank you for all the work on this.
Thanks.
Now we have an overlay, asphalt overlay scheduled for the bid. Aaron, you're up again.
As we do each year, staff advertise and receive bids for our annual asphalt overlay project. This year, three companies attended the pre-bid conference and four companies submitted bid. This higher amount of interest than we normally get is likely due to the large amount of paving proposed this year. The bids received were from Branscombe Inc. for $1,126,226, from Allen Myers for $1,233,333, from Basic Construction for $1,569,966, and from Lehigh Paving for $1,616,314.85. For fiscal year 16, the city was approved for supplemental funding from VDOT from both the revenue sharing and the primary extension paving programs. Revenue sharing, as you're aware, is a 50-50 cost share to leverage city funds with state funds, while the primary extension funds are 100% state funds. On the schedule for this year, we have 16 streets and two parking lots in five major areas. The first area is the Carey Street and Griffin area, which also includes Norfolk Avenue, With Lane, Pollard Park, and Idlewood Lane. The Burns Lane area, which includes Powell Street and Goodwin Street. The Pine Crest area neighborhood, which includes Monumental Avenue, Hamilton Street, Grove Avenue, and Tanyard Street. The Lafayette Street Municipal Complex area, which is Lafayette Street from the Parkway crossing to Richmond Road and North Boundary Street in front of the Striker Center area that we held off in prior years because of that work. We will also be doing the Library and Police Striker Center parking lot that's remaining after the work there, and resurfacing the Fire Department parking lot. And then the last area we have is Richmond Road, and this is two sections of it from College Corner to Brook Street and from High Street all the way to the North Corporate Limit. Because of the volume of the work that we're proposing this year, the work outside the downtown area is planned to begin in April, followed by the remaining work after the Williamsburg graduation in mid-May. We anticipate all of this work to be completed by July. The bids are based on unit prices multiplied by estimated quantities. And so, for example, the bidder provides a cost per ton to the asphalt, we provide estimated asphalt tonnages. So the final cost of the city will vary from the submitted bid, as it will reflect the actual tonnage used on the project. We have funding in the fiscal year 16 capital improvements budget to cover the cost of the project, and the low bidder, Branscombe Inc., is well-qualified to perform the work. So we recommend that council award them the contract in the amount of $1,126,226. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You've got the council for questions.
Comment and question. I continue to be amazed by the wide swing in the range of bids, that we could have a 50% difference between the high bidder and the low bidder, or 35%, depending on how you want to calculate that. But it's just remarkable that they're all in the same business and the pricing is so radically different. That's not a question. I'm amazed by that. The question is, do we have any sense of the impact on the, I'm thinking of Lafayette, North Henry in particular, or I should say, North Boundary, Lafayette, North Boundary, Armistead area, with the regular traffic of buses in and out of the train station and the emergency vehicles that come and go from the fire station on a regular basis? Do those streets take a greater degree of pounding or wear?
Yes, much, much greater in those areas, just because of, and a large portion of it is the buses versus the fire department. And it's because they're just continually coming through there every day. And yes, it does take a regular beating. But we also have thicker pavement sections in there to handle those, in those certain areas.
Because of that, do we repave those more frequently than other areas?
Yes, you will find that the areas that have the higher, higher loads from typically truck and bus traffic, as well as the higher traffic volumes, like Richmond Road, do have to be paved more often.
Scott?
Just a historical question relates to Paul's comment. Were any one of these four bidders the firm we had paved last year?
Yes.
Was that?
That was Branscombe.
That was Branscombe, too?
It was the low bidder.
Got you.
You know, I'm fully supportive of fixing streets and making sure that we maintain them well, but as I brought up at our retreat, I'm still concerned about the narrow section of Lafayette Street and missed opportunity. And I know the staff communicated their response to that question about, and that was for the public. You know, we've got so many overhead power lines, we've got sidewalks with poles in the middle of them, and there's just really an opportunity, or a need there, I think, to take care of all of that. And I'm afraid that if we, by paving it, it only delays, you know, getting those power lines underground, getting the poles out of the sidewalks, fixing curbs and gutters. And I'd almost hate to make the investment there to repave it, only to take it up, you know, sometime in the near future. And I just, you know, I know Mr. Clayton said, you know, this buys us eight years, so to speak, for that section of Lafayette Street. And I just don't think we have eight years for that section.
And any thoughts on that?
I've followed up with the public works director on that. While the paving is anticipated to last eight years, it does not preclude the city from initiating a project of need earlier. The cost of resurfacing here is low enough that there's not a large fiscal impact versus overall. So if we have an opportunity to do more five years from now, there's not, there's not a large loss of fiscal loss there. And you're still pretty close to that need. This is a very temporary patch. I asked directly, you know, can we not just wait five years? No. The condition of the road surface now, from a vehicle safety standpoint, needs to be repaired now. So the management recommendation is to go ahead and resurface Lafayette now, with the understanding that there's likely a larger capital project that'll be brought in the CIP to council in the future outside of this budget.
And I think the condition of the road there is, it really needs it now.
Yeah, no question. I mean, it definitely needs it. I just, I'd hate to, hate to tear it up, you know, sooner than we need to, because we did make the investment today. And I realize it's not in our CIP, and it is a significant investment, so we can't, can't have both, best of both worlds here. I just lament not being able to do it.
We can try.
And it was some significant agreement that we are going to focus on that area.
Right.
In the near term.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think, and I guess I do have one question, and I think Dan's dealt with this to some extent, is the question of Pollard Park, which is an unusual street.
Yes.
And maybe the most unusual street in the city. And so the sensitivity to that, and I think, Dan, your response to the neighbors there was a good one, that we certainly understand the nature of that neighborhood, and we'll take that into account and do what we can to minimize the impact on the feel of that very special neighborhood. So thank you guys for that. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council, award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Branscombe Inc. for the 2016 asphalt overlay schedule based on unit prices in the amount of $1,126,226.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Aaron. I appreciate it. And thank you, Dan, and all your staff for a lot of good work. We're looking forward to having this done. I see attorney reports. I think you've been pretty busy today.
I have nothing else today.
No unfinished business? Any new business?
I have one piece. I think this is our last meeting in this room, thankfully. And I just want to thank the staff. I mean, it was not easy to convert this room. I mean, IT did a lot of work, whoever did these tables did a lot of work, Jerry does a lot of work. And I just think it's been, it's been very creative of everybody, and I would like to thank everybody.
And I think, I think all of us can chime in on that, say thank you all for helping us through this period, and it's.
I'd like to, Marvin and I attended a meeting last week or earlier this week, it seems like it's been a long time ago, with Karen Riordan, President of the Chamber, James City County Administrator, Brian Hill, and Kevin Anzler, their supervisor and representative to the Chamber Board. And we had a good and lengthy discussion about sports tourism in the destination. The kind of result of that meeting is the three administrators, no one from your county can make it to the meeting, but the three administrators are going to get together, take a look at the two sports tourism studies that have been done, and have a discussion on that. First off, try to determine some efficiencies that low tap localities can come up with in working with sports tourism clients. Uniform pricing schedules for out-of-town events is kind of a blowhanging fruit there. But also really review and digest those two studies and determine the next steps, and take those back with their respective localities. Of particular importance for us is the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and how we fold those, the results of those two studies into whatever that plan becomes.
And I think, couple things there is, I think, I think anybody interested in this really needs to look and study those two studies.
Right.
Because they have a great deal of information and provide some insights into both potential as well as issues that we need to resolve. And I think you put your finger on it, you know, this really has to be a cooperation among the three localities and the tourism alliance and the tourism businesses if this is going to work.
Right.
And, you know, there are lots of pieces in place, there are lots of other pieces needed, and I think coming together and creating that master plan and vision for where we're going to go is an important step. And again, I think some pieces are there, and the Tourism Alliance study and the study that James City County did are both important parts of that. There may need to be other parts as well before we go forward.
Yeah, and I just wanted to compliment Councilman Foster and Mr. Collins for getting together, and as Scott has been kind of the driving factor at the alliance to get this discussion on the table. Because it is something that the tourism community has been talking about, having, creating another destination driver, like we put efforts into arts, you know, sports really has a significant potential. And I know that there's a great deal of interest in having this discussion come back to municipalities to figure out how we best move forward, so thank you.
You know, to some degree, there's a philosophical component to this, and up to this point, I'd say it's fair that we've been taking recreational facilities designed for resident use and maximizing their application to the promotion of tourism. And then the question becomes, is that the way we want to continue? Or do we want to go to the next level and really look at the tourism-driving components that we would need in order to make that difference in visitation, which wouldn't necessarily be driving the same amount of residential use? There's not a right or wrong answer, it's just determining how we can work together to determine what's going to be the best return of the investment.
And that's where these studies come into play, I think. And I think as we begin to envision that, I don't think it needs to be either or. I think it needs to be what kind of facilities can both serve the locality and serve this. And I think very often we want to say, we need it for this, or we need it for that. But in this case, it may be the potential to have something that serves both of those. And how do we think about that, not just as a city, but really as the historic triangle, as a region? Because I don't think any one locality itself has the ability to really do this, but together we may have the ability to do it.
The other thing that I hope this discussion does is tease out the other intangible partnerships that are possible out there. You know, we keep talking about the three localities participating, but is there a role for the college? Do they want to be involved? I mean, that could have a lot of potential, and it has not been fully vetted, and so.
Okay. I think we're going to hear a lot more about this. Any other new business? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go to open forum, where I think we will hear more about this. I have a card from Ron and Kirk Lynn about sports, of course.
Mayor Holman, members of council, I'm Ron Kirk, representing the WHMA. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I'm glad to hear the preliminary discussions have occurred on the feasibility of an indoor sports megaplex, my word. And we're very excited about the prospect. While the opinion of the association is that a sports megaplex is the ideal complement for the tourism mix in Williamsburg, it's also pretty important to better understand the opinions of tourists and the wants and needs of local citizens as well. Citizens that I would point out are thoughtfully and wisely represented by the five of you. Once and for all, I would ask that we fully and faithfully vet this idea that's been floated around for years. Let's roll up our sleeves together, do the work that I'm confident will lead us to a conclusion that if nothing else, will leave all parties satisfied, knowing that we've conducted a comprehensive review. I hope there's a place for the WHMA to be involved, and we welcome the opportunity, and thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, Ron. I also have a speaker's card from Gary Shelley. Mr. Shelley, welcome.
I'm Gary Shelley, living at 205 Indian Springs Road. In recent appearances before council, I've reintroduced concerns for issues that were brought to your attention in past years, which were ignored by you. After receiving a letter from you last fall regarding multiple illegal intrusions under private property by city personnel, I had hoped that you have at last long, at long last, decided to respond to legitimate constituent concerns. I had hoped that the presence of the new city manager at these meetings would coerce you to respect the concerns of our citizens, and that you would respond to them. I had hoped that your stubborn refusal to address these concerns in the past had been replaced by a new era of open, honest government. It is now apparent that my hopes have been dashed. In November... In November, I asked why our council didn't provide legally mandated minutes of a council retreat. In December, I asked for assurance that the city had remained neutral in a lawsuit brought by two Williamsburg students against the voter registrar. These were not new issues. They had been brought to your attention in the past, but you had not responded. In January, I asked you directly, please, please, address these concerns, and you haven't. Today, I'm bringing back another issue. I once again ask you to explain why you did not disclose to the public the existing contract made between your friend David Krenbuhl and the owners of 110 Harrison Avenue. The notorious and disastrous real estate transaction that embittered college students and cost taxpayers roughly $120,000. The existence of the contract should have been central to council's discussion when they got involved in the project. There is nothing new about my request. I've spoken many, many times about this issue. You have yet to respond, other than a letter some years after the fact from a city attorney who was unable to provide a defense for your withholding of this critical information. So today, I once again ask you to please explain to us why you withheld the critical information of the existence of that contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. It's always nice to hear from you. Would anyone else wish to address city council on any matter? If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing now, I'm going to think we have a closed session.
Yes, we did. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning city manager's six months...
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session.